Guys.
Good morning, everyone, and I would like to welcome you here today to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, February twenty eighth to twenty three. And if I'm correct, this is the last day of February, right?
Yes, sir.
On top of that. So again, with me this morning, I had Schwenker, myself, Mike Steinis, our York County Supervisor, we have Lisa Bjorn here from the Auditor's Office. Watching over us and Luanne, our Executive Assistant is in the background, Mary is here from the media, newspaper, I guess. One or the other. Both, just the newspaper. And first on our agenda this morning is Mr. Todd Candy, our County Engineer. Good morning.
Morning. So. First thing on the agenda is review for the rubber tire roller purchase. I just handed out a little summary of the quotes received. There's, when you see the model, the WRT thirteen. Those units are seven and a half foot wide and thirteen means they have thirteen tires. Six in the front, seven in the back, and the fifteens are eight and a half foot wide. And they got seven fire tires in the front and eight in the back, so. The reason I bring that up is like the tractors we're gonna pull this with. Their out, out of back wheels are about hundred and five inches or roughly about eight point seven five feet. And that, I think that's the outside face, the outside face of the tire. But really what we try to do or compacting is the lugs on the tires. We wanna have that roller cover the lugs, otherwise you're gonna drive around lugs, basically. So that's the reason why I'm recommending we go with the eight, eight and a half foot wide ones. Looking at, we got some new pricing. There's a one year parts only on the new units. There's not a whole lot that goes wrong with them. I checked with that shop form in Clint County. He said they've replaced maybe two to three beetle bearings a year per unit. As he said, it's like, you know, it's only like thirty, thirty dollars a parts and it takes one to two hours per bearing, so it's not a huge. Expense to replace the bearings. So even if we bought new ones and replaced three bearings a year. In the, in the used ones, you know, it'd take almost fourteen years to, to. Save the money for buying new. And who's to say that, you know, you're gonna do that or the new units wouldn't need bearings replacements in the thirteen years anyway, so. My recommendation is to buy the two used units. Because we're gonna have another expense, I didn't wanna talk about this, but. We get the tires foam filled. Which is fairly expensive. Because when you turn on them and all that, it just makes the tires last longer. And when you turn on them, the, the tires don't pop off the rim where they're foam filled. So we got another, you know, like I had down there, probably. Roughly about four thousand dollars per unit to get the tires foam filled when we get them, so.
How long do you have to replace the tires and rims that are foam filled?
So I asked that, once we fill them, we fill them with foam, we have not replaced the tire yet of the used machines we have.
How long do you have? If I understand it right, when you foam fill them. The rims, you, you can't take that off, it's.
Yeah.
It's choner after that.
So we've had those rollers, I'm gonna guess, I'd have to look up at least. Eight to ten years, I would guess.
So I'm looking at that unit and my thoughts are, if I'm gonna change a bearing on that tire in the middle, I'm starting from the end and pulling them off. To get to that bearing, correct, in the, in the, in the hub.
I couldn't tell you that.
Okay. You know, when I first looked at this chart, when you emailed me, I, I was definitely. Leaning on the new one, but I didn't realize that one was only thirteen at twenty one, too. I understand the eight and a half foot wide now, that makes complete sense to me, but now you're at. Eight thousand dollar difference from new to used, and that makes a difference to me, yes.
Yeah, plus you gotta add another four grand per, you're at almost.
A grand would fill the tires.
Yeah, four grand per unit.
And you would fill the tires on a new one also.
Yes, that, the new ones have built, come full build either.
And does it do a better job compacting, I would say some sort of, it is.
I would say yes.
Harder.
I would say yes, and they're not down as low. We used them for a while, they weren't fold filled, we went to fold film. In short order.
Yeah, okay. So I can't imagine this company wouldn't recommend that going forward, you know, with that recommendation, maybe they tell you that after you find it, but. And there's two units available at Conquest for that?
Yeah.
Is that where we're looking?
Conquest is, has the used ones, they also have the rent and own, but I don't think. Really, we wanna, cause I only think it was only like. Seventy percent of the rent goes towards the purchase price, so we might as well, we might as well. Buy them so we don't lose out the thirty percent of the rent, when it could be, you know, a couple grand.
And your thought at one point that. Couldn't kind of, gonna be real nice and let us choose one for a while and check it out. But again, that's probably, that was a tree for the roller, no?
Possibly either one, but it just depends, we have one roller to the front. The swivel bearing on the, the tone, that's bad on it, so we're not using it. And I wouldn't recommend you guys use it either, so we'll have two that are operational, so. And that one's narrow anyway, that's one of the, I think it's one of the ones that are seven and a half foot wide that.
So out of the. Where we paid for the, the reclamer out of that fifty thousand, that the reclamer was like nineteen eight or something, so that would leave roughly thirty thousand left. If you add these two used ones together, the eight and a half foot ones, to me, it comes out to thirty six one. So it'd be forty thousand, one hundred dollars to get the two used ones and the tires foam pill, if my math is correct.
Forty four, cause it's four grand.
Forty four, okay. So if we have thirty thousand left of that grant, you got fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars in your budget, did you come up with the difference?
I think so. Yeah, and I'm hoping, I think maybe. You guys have bigger tractors, they're slightly bigger. I'm thinking maybe we could do these toe retain them, so we'd have one less guy on the job. If we have enough room to turn them around, we wouldn't have to have two tractors, two guys, we could have one tractor pulling two rollers, so you're making a double pass.
Really? How do you do that?
They got a big hitch in the back of them. Yeah, you just, if you've seen the pictures of them, this is a big, it's probably a two inch pin in the back.
For the, for the roller, you mean?
Yeah.
Given how you hook two of them to the tractor, you gotta have some kind of. Oh, just double, double. Not side by side.
No, like UBS truck. Yeah, so we compacted, it's not just one passenger done, we're gonna make six to seven passes on the same area of road, so we're gonna. Apply a lot of compaction energy to the same area. It's not just we make one pass, we're done, it's one, two, three, four, five, six.
Now, the roller, somebody, I was talking to somebody, he said that. Packers will kind of bring moisture out of the road, is that true, or is this just?
They'll, they have a kneading action, so yeah, so it will pump a little bit of water, so you gotta have enough. Moisture, optimum moisture content for compaction, but you can't, you'll know if it's too much moisture in the road. When you start making ruts with it, like it's pumping up in between the tires, it's too wet.
So. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve the purchase of the two conquests, eight and a half foot wide rollers. I think the total I got comes to thirty six, one hundred for the purchase of machines. And then we can work out the nuances of. Home pills, you want to pull a pill before they get.
Yeah, where'd you get that?
Yeah, are you adding in the?
One of them, one of them is nineteen six.
No, one, two of them at sixteen five.
Sixteen.
No, the second one is sixteen five, it's the shipping difference. So the first one, right?
The first one is nineteen six. Remember, like, their charge was forty one hundred, but if you buy a second unit, they'll put it on the same truck.
And the second one is sixteen five.
So I would suggest.
I looked at it like you.
Yeah, it says if we buy two. It'd be sixteen five, I thought that's sixteen five each.
No.
So that's for the second.
The second one, the difference is three thousand per shipping.
You're saying the nineteen six.
Yeah, so.
So if I'm at the right, it's thirty six one.
So it's gonna get, like, what do you do, I would say, just do a motion to approve the purchase of the eight and a half foot wide used rollers? Cause I had need to go back to conquest and say, yes, we're gonna buy these, give me your final quote, because. They, they, this, the freight was. Variable based on the date, so let's just say we're gonna buy those two eight and a half foot wide from conquest for the quoted, the base price quoted. And then the freight will just be what the freight is.
Give you the ability to negotiate.
Well, like he quoted this, you know, weeks ago and freight, you know, changes, so.
Does the foam bill?
Any local tire place, like, we use tires of origin.
That's my motion is to buy the used equipment from conquest, the two of them. The base price and the final payment with the freight, whatever Todd said. If you got that, Lee.
My motion says to approve the purchase of two used rubber tire rollers from conquest for the base price as quoted.
Plus should be eight and a half foot wide.
Wait, I have a second.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second to approve the purchase of the two rollers from conquest as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carried.
And two, with the rollers. I don't know what you guys done, but typically, when you take a paved road and you pull the gravel shoulders up on those. You really need to compact those two, so those rollers could be used to compact those shoulders too, it lasts much longer, you don't get the edge rut happen as quick, so. It's not like you're only gonna use them doing this to.
Hundred percent agree.
Now, on the, on the site, now, that reclamer we're buying, if we get done. Retrieving or retriever, if we get them, could we use it on shoulders instead of having a. Main can go through and scrape it up onto the driving surface and then try to sweep it back off, so that reclamer just go through and.
I would use it on shoulders, if you have the same thing, same concept, if you have a lip on a gravel shoulder on a paved road, a grass lip, I would do the same thing with that lip. I would bring that up onto the shoulder and compact it, just like you do everything else, cause if you got water draining off the pavement service to the gravel and sitting on the gravel where the grass is higher, cause of the lip. Get rid of the lip, get the water in the ditch, same concept. All right, so all systems permit. So what I handed out to you there. The, the green, the roads highlighted in green, or whatever you wanna call it, shown in green, are permitted roads. Where the bridges have been evaluated to be. Have the capacity. To handle the twelve percent overloads on the all system permit trucks. What's shown in red, they do not, so we don't have the option of putting anything in red on there. I've highlighted. Well, actually, one, two, three, four, five different roads in yellow there. Those roads maybe don't make a lot of sense to put on the all systems permit. The one up in the, the far north there, two hundred thirtieth avenue, we're still waiting to hear back from Dubuque. If Dubuque doesn't put in their roads, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have that road being an island. Because they can't get anywhere from it. So really, I just wanna make you guys aware of this, you don't, you guys don't approve these, you don't need to do a resolution or a motion. I just was looking for a little input. Number one, give you the information. Number two, do you wanna include these? I would call these gravel road feeders that really, like Severding Ridge, Mill Creek. God, that's small, three oh eight street and three hundred ninety fifth avenue, they're paved, but they kind of lead into. What I would call residential areas that. The all systems permit. Doesn't really make sense there, like, I don't know if they're gonna get a lot of those type of truck, truck, uh, pollen trips there. That little road on the east side of Preston, kind of the same thing, but. They are, they do meet the. If they have a bridge, they are, they're eligible to have a serviceable capacity for the overweight trucks.
Okay, so let's just start on a couple, I have a couple questions on right off the top, way on the top north, I would call it, I'm gonna call it top of the sheet north, correct? And we're gonna go in the northwest corner, if that is the old highway, of course. So if you're coming down two thirty, if you wanna call it. To Centerville Road to Haxlebine, which is to Centerville. So if Dubuque County, i- if you do do that one in green, won't you come all the way to Haxlebine, which goes to sixty one pay? So would you include Haxlebine in that?
No, because it's my understanding that where it takes that little jog west, that's not our county.
Oh, yeah, I, yeah, you could be right, right here, this one?
Yeah, we're. Right here?
Yeah.
That bumps into.
That is not, that is.
Yeah, so that's why.
South of there, part of Haxlebine is the injection, correct? And that's paved straight across from Centerville over sixty one.
Yeah, so.
Not that they can't go down through Lamont from that, from that, yeah, that, that I guess, you know.
Yes, the Haxlebine Road, that would be one, I.
Well, a question for Dubuque County.
Yes.
Yes. It's half and half, I think, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I'd have to double check, I, I checked with Mike, I'm not familiar with that, but I think that. Well, that, what is that? Yeah, anything west of that, that section line, I believe is Dubuque County.
Okay, where the, where it's colored, where the, where the name of the road are colored, that's all the difference.
Yeah, Benny Road, Pitts Road.
Yeah, okay. Welcome.
Welcome.
Okay, yeah, I, I would agree that that does not really have to be. As long as Centerville is not on it anyway. And if I'm going over along the river now, like three ninety fifth. I can't imagine that that needed to be either, because again, you're coming to a gravel road going north on. Three ninety and.
Third level B.
Right, and the cut across road. Doesn't get you anywhere, can't get you to another. Cause that's fifty two. So they can use that though, correct?
They can use state highways, not interstate.
Yeah. See, but the reason it makes no sense, because they're not gonna come down that hill into building anyway, I don't believe.
And if you remember too. We're gonna do this, and then if, if somebody comes to the board, to the engineer's office and says, hey, I'd really like to look at whatever road. Two hundred sixty seventh street for an all systems permit, we would look at gravel roads individually. But we wanted to get. Our paved road system that could handle it, put on there, that was the intent.
I certainly think this gives them a good option to get from wherever they need to go, I should say. Not that they didn't use them roads already. It's a fact whether they get, you pay the five hundred dollars to do it lickily, you know, that's the point.
So I guess what I'm planning on doing is I will eliminate Severding, Mill Creek. Three ninety fifth and three oh eights, we'll take those off, okay? And then I will just wait to hear back from Dubuque. On. That, the rest of two thirty, if that, if that little jaw. Is gonna be on there, then we'll put that, we'll include that. Section of green, two hundred thirtieth avenue up to the north, if they're not gonna put that road on there. Old Davenport Road, then we might as well take that section to the north off as well. Cause it doesn't connect anything.
I would agree, and I, I would guess they're gonna put it on there, but I don't know that.
We've got Preston one on there, too.
Let's, I have it, I, you can, I mean.
That was out to the cemetery, is that correct enough?
Well, you're, it linked up with sixty four, but unless you're on twenty first street, you would never. Need to get in, that all systems permit on that road would make sense, unless you live on twenty first street. Unless you got a business there and you wanna haul overweight. Cause otherwise, you're gonna be on sixty four.
Yeah, it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't really go anywhere.
So I would just say, take it off.
And allows your, your farmers that live over here to go the gravel and.
Well, they still have to get the gravel on there, cause it's not.
Right.
So if the farmer is on that gravel, wanted all system permit, then he could just ask about seventeen street going into town as well. You understand what I mean?
Cause it's sixty four, he's a half a mile away from sixty four.
Yeah. I would, I mean, it's on there because it's paved, but.
Okay.
We just really. Don't have a whole lot though for. Which I understand, we have the bridge limitations. That whole McCoke and a miles.
Other than sixty four.
Around sixty four.
Yeah, that's why I'd rather have them anyway.
I would too. So.
They gotta get to sixty four.
So if they gotta, if they gotta come north south, then that would be a gravel road, and I wouldn't want them traveling east west on a gravel road. They should get north south, get to sixty four and then get the miles.
And they couldn't request that yet. So do we know, Todd, like, from Preston down to Goose Lake or, and from like on the Delmar Road there, them two marked Clinton County? Or do you think Clinton County's gonna approve that?
Okay. Yeah, we're in the.
That's what's gonna get you to ADM.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And that's the one they use anyway.
So we, yeah, there's both the bridges that we have on there, one on. V thirty six. Coming up one thirty six, that bridge is fine, and the other one. Is doing up slab as well, so.
Is this something Bjorn that we can have on our? Site?
I would don't, I would not put it on our website, because it's on the DOT's all systems map site.
Okay, perfect.
This map will be, but once we give the DOT this information, they go to click, go to Jackson County, and they can see the roads in Jackson County, they can travel.
Yeah, okay, perfect. I, I mean, yeah. It's been stated before, I, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with you. Five hundred dollars. We don't cover our expenses for doing that, but. It's better than nothing, I guess.
Yeah, they're gonna, if it's under the government's information, they're gonna do it anyway, so. So we'll, we'll get this in in March, and then I've checked with the DOT, so we'll start getting revenue in April. So any permits issued in April, we will start getting our share of the revenue from that, cause we'll get this information in March. There's thirty nine, I just was checking too, with the, there's thirty nine counties that already have routes on the system.
Can you tell me the mileage on these roads that you have on, minus the, no?
But I can.
No, that's fine. Just, so I, if it was a question that.
I can't tell you the elevation change either.
ADT.
All right, we're good with that, so that's what we're gonna progress with.
We need action here.
No.
No? It says action.
There's discussion.
All system permits.
It's the same.
On Todd's agenda, just with prescription.
It doesn't, no, you guys don't need to take extra by motion or anything. I mean, I can, but you don't have to. All right, next thing. Oops. Well, sorry. I'll give you my copy. So we got quotes back in for. Factory road patching. You can see there, we got. Four quotes submitted. Low quote is Cedar Falls Construction. They haven't, it's been a while since they've done work in Jackson County, I mean, they've done work for us in Clint County as well, I mean, that's. They work. A lot of times, there'll be subs for paving contractors, they'll come in and you're passing ahead of time, and then the main contractor does the paving, so. They do this work all the time, I, I don't have any issue with. Them, so they're low quote. Only issue is we only have budgeted five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but. It is what it is, so. We need to do the work.
How do you make up the difference?
We spend into our, over, over our contingency, that's what it's there for. Then we might have to do a budget amendment come. May or something, but. But yeah, we gotta do the work, and the, the price is the price, so.
So when I'm looking at these prices, is there a reason, is there one of these companies that does not want to work, is why it's? There's a bit of a.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I wouldn't worry about that, the three that do this work a lot, Venco, Midwest is who does it a lot for us, they've done it. Last three or four years here in Jackson County. Big call, just said they're, they're booked, I mean, they're. They're booked, and it's just to try and get it done within our timeframe, they were gonna.
Makes a difference for the call.
Yeah.
So you're comfortable with Cedar Falls?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Welcome to approve Cedar Falls Construction to the FY twenty four pavement patching.
I'll second that.
A motion and second to approve Cedar Falls Construction to do the PCC Payment Pressure Coach as presented, all those in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Okay. All right, just the last here. Open my notes. Okay, I'd mentioned the, the snow blower, like I said. There's one available. It's a similar model, make and model the size that we have two of them in Clint County. It's been gone through like by their shop and, you know, kind of checked over, so what I'll probably do is. Ask. The shop maybe to go look at it, the problem is, you know. Our shop foreman's off, gonna be, you know, off for an extended period, he is currently off. So I kinda wanna have him available to go look at it, so when he comes back, like, limited duty. I'll probably have him go up there and look at it, hopefully it's still available, but I don't wanna. I don't wanna. Come to you guys and say, hey, yeah, we wanna buy it and talk about discussing how that's gonna happen. Until the shop foreman's had a chance to look at it, so it's gonna be a bit of time before he comes back on limited duty, so that's where I'm at with that, so.
So, I mean, it's probably not the idea of trying to buy a snow blower, but.
Sure is.
Doesn't it make a difference to buy it?
No, so what'll happen is, we'll have to, you know, we'll check it over. Kind of do a little research on what, what the pricing is based on the, you know, the hours, the year, that kind of thing. Condition of the tires, you know, we'll test drive and all that stuff, so. You know, just we'll make an offer on it and see if we can come to an agreement.
Do you guys use yours this weather?
Uh, yeah.
Do you, does Clint County, or do we, do you know, do we put any type of snow barrier, snow fence, I wanna call it? Anywhere, anywhere, other than maybe the agricultural purposes, leaving a couple of those a corner or something, I have one road. That, of course, there's no ditch. And it is a problem child every year, and it's got a bank this tall. With no ditch. And they fight it, they invite it, invite it, invite it every year.
Yeah.
And does it make sense to run? Eight hundred feet of snow fence?
So. The what, i- it's tough to do this snow fence, just because. Facilitating, putting the posts in, putting the fence up, taking the fence out, the timing of all that. We, we have a draft policy for the living snow fence, like the DOT does.
Right.
And I would. Rather do that, if the guy plants like corn or beans, now it's, you know, it depends on what he's planting, but. That seems to work a little better, because you can do it on a much wider scale, you know what I mean, because it's. All you're doing is leaving corn up and then come, you know, now springtime, then go out harvest, you know, so. I, I'd have to check with Roger, I don't know if we do that much here, I know in Clint County, we do very.
I think there's that many of them, but I mean, this one in particular, and I talked to one of the guys first and see what he thought, but. I mean, it is a child, it always has been, a child.
Yeah, I mean, we.
I mean, stick some posts in and, and with the skid loader or whatever, push them in and put a, put these orange plastic fence up anymore, like. It ain't like the picket fence we used to put up.
All right. Yeah, I mean, we could. I mean, we'd just have to be a, a thing where we'd have to. Thing, you know, we have rolls of, of that orange snow fence, so it's not like, like you said, it's not a big material expense. It's just a matter of the labor and the timing of when we can get in and do it, we gotta come back and take it out, so like. You know, about the time they wanna take it out, we're gonna, should be getting busy, start to do major road start rehab stuff, so.
Yeah, I, I, I don't see a lot of. Time frame involved, or a lot of time involved, and I just, yeah, just a couple of them that are. I mean, really bad.
Yeah, and if you have the spots, just send me an email.
Yeah, I will.
So that's on the snow blower, like I said, I'll, I wanna get the shop foreman out there to look at, and then once he's done that, we've had a chance to take. Look it over and maybe, you know, operate it, kind of see how it runs and all that, I'll come back to you guys, we will revisit that, so. Right now, I think I, he said he, he hasn't listed for thirty five thousand dollars, so it's not priced too terrible, so. It is a little bit older, but the mile, or excuse me, the hours on it are substantial, so. These typically come from a municipal airport, like in Wisconsin area. So they don't get used a lot, but they have to have it there to keep the runway clear, so.
So is it like an end loader tape machine, it just, just had the snow blower, that's it? I mean, is it, is it?
Self propelled.
Yeah, I know, it's articulate too, or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, so it's got craps here, it's all wheel drive, it's got two Detroit engines on it, one runs the blower, one runs the machine. I got videos of it on my phone, if you wanna stop by after the meeting, I can show you, but it's. It's.
Again, it sounds, sounds, you know, like a lot of machines for that money, I guess, with two engines and. I mean, that's all you can use it for, of course.
But you gotta realize too. They're great, when, when it's windy and you got drifting problems, they're. They're great, when, when it's windy and you got drifting problems, they're, they catch me out. But if you don't have drift, you just not win, they're gonna sit and they don't use it, yeah.
Hopefully, it sits a lot.
Yeah.
I, I, it's one of those, eventually hope it sits, you know, it's just one of those things where, how much damage are we doing to the handers when they're out there with a V plow ramming in the snowdrifts back and up?
Exactly what I'm talking about, the problem trail that I see, you know, I mean, that thing is eight feet deep all the time.
Then it would, it would walk right through.
Yeah, yeah.
That's where, you know, just it's time is money a lot of times.
Well, it's just the service, like you can get more roads opened up faster, so it's a, a higher level service to the public too.
How would you most take this around to different areas?
How would we?
Yeah.
Drive it.
This goes like fifty five miles an hour.
It's, it's like a.
I didn't know if it was.
Like the thing that she uses?
Yeah, it drives like a, it's got bigger tires, they're wider, but it's like, they're like, uh. If you ever seen like an army transporter, kind of has those taller, wider tires, it's kind of like that, they're a little bit wider than that, but. Uh, and then last but not least, I will be on vacation. Tomorrow through the eighth, I sent you an email, don't give me the big, oh, gas, so, so, yeah. So I, I'll be uh responding to emails, but um. I mean, I probably, you could call, but I I don't know if I'll be able to answer typically, but leave a message and I'll try and get back to you, but.
Can we ask where you go?
What? Yeah, you could ask, no, uh, I'm, I'm traveling to Warner Clinic.
Alright, well, have fun. You probably did there.
No, just order, I'm going to golf trip with a bunch of guys.
Oh, mother's not even going?
No, no. It's a nice person every time she says.
Well, go back, go back soon.
She probably won't watch it.
Send the link.
Alright, yeah, that's all I can do.
For the last couple of days, but I passed some law into the worthy source, so.
Excellent.
Alright, thank you. Alright, it's a visitor in citizens section, it appears that we have uh. Mark here, would you like to address the board? Okay, so. Mark comments here anyway from Farm Bureau, and if you wanna give your. Official title, you sure can, so everyone knows you.
Um, Mark Haddo, Jackson County Farm Bureau member.
Don't we have a little more credentials and that behind that?
That's not why I'm here today. Jackson County residents.
Yeah, good. Perfect. I would appreciate it if you ever have any questions or concerns for us to bring them forward.
Yep, thanks.
Thanks, Mark. Uh, next on our agenda. John Cheese or Jackson County Attorney, or I'm sorry. Maybe this young lady is a vetisir, is it, okay? I didn't wanna, oh, okay. I didn't wanna skip somewhere. Good morning.
Couple of things here. So. I just want to um. Give a little quick update. To this busy board. On uh. The. Security upgrade proposal for the county attorney's office. Uh, I think we can do this. Relatively cheaply, relatively quickly. Um, with sort of a, a minimum of shuffling things around, and I think the impact. For the security office will be substantial, which of course is what this is all about. The idea is to. Lock the door. So that um. The secretary office manager can open it with a, with just a little. Cuddle, a little sound noise, the door can quickly easily done. Her office, instead of being right there by the door, would be moved into what you'd be Limbo's old office. Uh, which is right now a, a file room. And you see that in the diagram. And then that front office there uh would be the conference room. Uh, for meeting with investigators and witnesses and victims, that sort of thing. Now, the, the, the expense that the, the letter from uh Jim Crocker talks about. Most of that uh expense is gonna be installation of a security window. Right now, what Jessica does is just takes uh works the fine program, she takes money from uh the public, people are, are paying out fines. Uh, she interacts with people that way, so by utilizing this window, she wouldn't have to uh. Open the office door, that would have to be open twenty four hours. And she could simply interact um through this window somewhere to something that. You might see today at the uh. At the um, if you go into the police station, that's where we're nine one one is, so she dispatches window there, something similar to that. Now, we have been uh tracking down Marty. And uh Marty has uh told us that he'd been speaking with the contractors that are working currently installing things for jail. Uh, and he believes the window is a twenty five hundred, twenty seven hundred cost, and having him install it somewhere twenty five, some thousand dollars. What he believes.
Just uh slide your window.
It would be four by four.
See that?
And I wish. So much I had more details on the window of the contractor today, but you know, if you're getting things out of Marty can be a difficult thing to do. So. So this is something.
So, you know, was there a window originally in there?
I would turn this over to Marty. No, this is the window that goes out into the hallway.
I thought there was a window in there already.
The windows between the two offices.
Yeah, and I thought there was another one be in the, on the, no.
Unless it was before my time.
Okay.
I don't think there was, no. So Marty, I was just telling the board, I, what you had told Jesse, I don't know anything more than that.
Yeah.
If you don't have anything more than that to give me, I get it.
Um. John Hanson is supposed to be getting me a quote on the price of the dope, the windows. He thought it would be somewhere around twenty three to twenty five hundred dollars just for the window.
So is this not something that you investigate yourself as far as a local contractor cutting that hole and? And you're getting a window, or is that something you went?
Well, what I was doing was just. Getting the price, and so he had a ballpark figure what to present to you.
Okay, so it's something that you would investigate a little bit though too, and see, alright, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm okay with the concept, whole, the whole idea, I think. I, I, I see no reason why people should be just walking in that door and. And Jess is that close? To the public, I should say, I mean, she's real close at this point. Um. A- again, the, the cost factor comes into play.
Mm-hmm.
So.
For sure, for sure.
And I don't know what other two board members think here, but that's just.
Well. Is this a set of precedents for windows throughout the courthouse dealing with the public in the future, the bulletproof glass and all that?
I mean, maybe a model, they, I mean, they could decide what they need, honestly, because I've already heard back from other offices and said that this wouldn't necessarily work for them. There may be some. Differences, but it'd be a model going forward.
I certainly think it's a case by case basis for office, probably, I mean, we know what we did to Arlene, and I think she's happy with that. Um, is this windows, is, this is a bulletproof window then or what?
Not every model is.
Yes.
Would be.
So does it need to be, because the door is not bulletproof, right?
Well, I think if she's sitting right in front of there, and if you're gonna get her. Boom. You know?
I guess there's a lot of scenarios you could draw around like that, but, you know, is that really?
Hollow way, what, is that cinder block?
So I'm gonna say it's cement block.
Right, that's what.
I think, is that in the bearing wall? For the roof trusses in his particular area, because it's a.
Technically, you could argue that whole wall, except for where the window be is bulletproof for the most part.
Oh, I would say yes.
So.
I guess I would like to see price quotes on.
Either or.
That as a bulletproof or as a non-bulletproof.
I will get that information. John's supposed to be getting it to me, I haven't received it as of yet, but I will. I will get that information.
And get some, yeah, investigate yourself would be possible, I get the bulletproof thing. Um, and of course, I certainly would not want anything to happen, um, I'm more concerned of the. Close contact, I should say. You know, if there's a window. Obviously, they can't get through it, hopefully. Um, but if you just have an open door, that's a different scenario.
Yeah, and there's, there's different levels of, of ballistic glass, and, and we'll see what uh. With just the research that I've done a little bit. Uh, and of course, ballistic glass is always a little bit more expensive. Um. And, but, but I think on some of those models. The, the cost for what you get, I don't think is all that much more, and of course, it'll be a board decision, but we'll get that information to you.
So Marty, when you say uh load bearing, is that something that we had to have? Engineered, because if we take a four by four out, do we need to header that, or do we need to?
In particular, it's block.
Yeah.
No bummer.
I get it.
It would definitely have to have a mantle put in it, but it's, it's doable.
And is that something, uh? I mean, I'm, I'm not suggesting a cement saw, but it is something that a cement saw just cut the hole out and.
It doesn't have.
That would be. Like the door out the back of the courthouse that we put in to bring the prisoners in. We did that there and it was all uh held up and, you know, done right.
So was that a cable cutter, or was that cement saw, take, take, is that it?
It was a chainsaw cement thing, ran off a hydraulic.
Yeah.
Well, the next question too is, does it have to be a four by four?
It does not, that was simply a model that we thought. Basically looking at what else was rounding the county that we knew worked. For years, and that was simply a model that they had over there dispatch.
Right. But it could be, I mean, for what you're saying it's gonna be used for, it could be a narrower.
Well, and I don't know that, but I re- I remember John saying the standard size is that size. Is what he told me. Uh, upon further investigating, I'm gonna go with that's what. They come in.
So you're talking to do business through or to something like that, that's common size, so when you open it, basically what you have left is a two by two, you know, or.
Or, but over there, you don't open nothing, you just slide your paper.
That way too, it just goes down under the glass, right, yeah, it, it'll be just.
See, because they're wanting to see that whole waiting room. Area for their issues over. At the PD station.
Right. So I could really agree with.
Just get a payment, payment in.
Right, I can believe, agree with them that. I guess we could obviously. See the difference if it's a three by three and it's twenty five hundred bucks, well then it's.
Yeah.
Food for thought, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, John, it's certainly under consideration, I would say. So. Um, I do not see Lori, um. She thought she was ready, she wasn't ready?
Yeah, she was down.
Hey, John, just left.
Unless Rachel's in a hurry, we can squeeze you in.
I'm in no hurry.
You said her behavior itself, then.
I'll do my best.
It's hard to do in here.
Been a short recess at this time. This time. We will reconvene at this time, and we're joined by Lori, Rowley, and Ruth. Um, our zoning administrator and assistant, good morning.
Hey, guys.
And uh. We will let you have the floor.
Okay. Um. Let's get her stuff out of the way.
Did you read copies of anything that you emailed last, or yesterday, when was it already?
I mean, Kathy does it open this this morning. At last second. Cases for the zoning commission.
Okay, go ahead, fire away. Go ahead, Lori.
Okay. So, the McCully property. The recommendation from the zoning commission was to grant. Or recommend to the board supervisors that that property be rezoned from A one to C one. And that's the property on Highway sixty four, just a little bit east of the current welcome center. On Bythe County, and on the south side of the road. And it's. At one time it had been used as a bait shop, it's been sitting idle for a long time, their, their goal is to use it as a bait shop. And also to um. Sell local, locally sourced produce and meats.
So if I remember correctly, not that I'm not old, but I believe my father had bought a boat in that same store one time forty years ago. Did they also sell boats on that little?
I didn't live here then, so I can't.
I believe I do still have the receipt somewhere. No, I mean, it used to be a commercial, I don't know if it was one commercial, or they had a special exception, but they used to be a store.
I'm sure either, cause he was under when um. When her nephew, when Terry's nephew spoke, um, he was under the impression, the impression that they had it rezoned from. Commercial to agricultural, and I'm like, I couldn't find an ordinance where it changed it. It's not that long ago, but. Yeah, in like five or six years, so what I'm thinking is that he was mixing up zoning districts versus. Classification use for assessment purposes, cause I did check in the assessor's office and they did change the classification.
Bjorn, could you pull that up, please? I'm sorry to interrupt you, Bjorn. Uh, six oh two five two. I'm just like, I'm just trying to help. Alright. Six oh two five two. Oops. No, that's wrong, that's the one that you're gonna have to go south.
Six oh six three seven.
One of those.
Yeah.
Yeah. So just to the west of that, what is that um property being used for right there, yeah?
That is zone M two. And that might be one that they're. Well, actually, I was looking at a picture of that, cause I was wondering what the M two use actually was, cause it doesn't look like it's an M two use. Do you wanna turn on the layer? The zoning layer, it's up, up a little more, right, up there. Excuse me, M one, okay.
No. The next one to the right of that.
That's McCull, that's their property.
Oh, that's all the same, just two Deborah parcels.
Right, but they're only asking for the rezoning on the small parcel.
Okay.
Just as a general question, there's no problem with spot zoning or anything like that?
I wouldn't say C one is set up to be commercial highway, so that's where zoning is written, commercial highway. And it's um. Let me just kind of phrase it just a little bit better. Um, it's intended to provide areas for commercial development, which primarily serve the traveling public. The district is also intended to accommodate certain other commercial uses, which ordinarily require access to a major street or highway.
Um, so the adjoining parcel to that small parcel. I don't know when that fisher was taken, but I don't think it's that busy right now.
I think it's been cleaned up.
Yeah, I, it, I don't remember seeing one right there.
Yeah, it doesn't look the same, and I think this was flown uh.
It's busy.
April of twenty two. March or April of twenty two, I think these flights were.
And I did attend that meeting, and he did say they were working on cleaning up the surrounding.
I, I don't think any of that stuff's there right now, I don't.
Yeah, they know I drove by it and, I'm like, yeah, different. And this building is likely, that's just an open front shed. Um, basically used for storage, um, and it's likely gonna be removed, so that won't be part of their operation. And he did not wanna rezone the surrounding property, because the intent was not to be using that as part of their commercial. Enterprise.
Okay. So the surrounding property, I know it's very busy in election year with a hay wagon and such.
I'm sorry?
All the sides hang right there.
Oh.
But uh. If his intent is not to use the rest of that, is that with attached purpose, or? If his intent is not to use the rest of that, is that with a tax purpose, or he just don't intend to use that much of it?
Well, I try to explain that the assessor's office doesn't necessarily look at how things are. Um, zone, they're gonna be looking at the, at the current use. And, and the usage of that property.
So do you see any issues in the future? I mean, I don't mind the small parcel like that it being used for a bait shop and that's all they're gonna need. Do you see an issue in the future if they wanted to include the rest of that, where it would be an issue?
No, I mean, we have an M one property, which is um industrial, which is usually more offensive. Than a, a commercial, a C one, and then we had another C one property, the red up in the corner. You already guessed like that, that's the, that's the county property. Well, it was, it was just transferred then, so um.
What's through the east of that property then?
Um cottage, cottage road and the railroad tracks.
That, that one.
Yeah, that's um, I think the old, what was this? Um, those are dwellings.
A one, that one's A one above.
All A one, everything in there, down cottage and six oh eight is gonna be. The best of my knowledge.
Okay, any other questions for Lori or Ruth? And what is uh, are you looking for action on this?
Um, I'm looking to, for you to allow us to publish the notice and take it to public hearing.
Most of the second to approve the. Uh, property rezoning, take it to a pub, publish for the public hearing, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed nay?
I'm not opposed.
No, I mean, that's what you're looking for, just so you can.
Yeah.
Thank you. Moving forward.
And the next one is the rezoning on the Velez property, um, up north of Lamont. And.
Or I'm sorry, three, four, two, five, seven. Two hundred and thirtieth avenue, Lamont.
That's currently a one point seven acre tract of, well, excuse me, is a two acre tract of land. Uh, two gross acres, the net acres actually comes down to one point seven four, which in our zoning ordinance. It's, it's not based on net acres, it's based on gross acre.
So they're basically saying the road's.
Yeah, eat it up. Um, so. I had put in the, the proposed subdivision plan should um.
This is the proposed survey though, correct?
That is not the post survey, that is current public books, that's what we sent to. Did I not put that survey in there? Oh, there it is, okay, there is a proposed survey, um, that shows how um. The, the property.
I got it, it's the same thing.
No, what, your paper over.
But the easement, to get into the parcel.
The easement does, the easement won't change, it's, the survey is basically showing two lots. Should um, the rezoning be approved, that's how they would propose surveying it all. The lot where the former church is um, was intentionally um drawn. So the sanitary sewer subject in water could be put on that lot, should anyone choose. To ever. Use the church as, as a principal dwelling. And then the other residual would be where the current parsonage and. Garage yard. And it would take both of those lots down below. Uh, uh, two acres, but they would meet the minimum R one. Uh, the minimum R one square footage over twenty thousand square feet.
So Lori, looking at this, the parcel they're um, trying to sell is the one with the easement going to the backside, correct? The church sits right there on the, yeah, right there. So that parcel they intend to keep as an art studio.
Yes, sir.
And this part right there where the cursor is.
No.
No, way over by the house.
I don't know what those. Survey lines.
So they're on.
So they're looking, um, the goal is to sell the, the parcel with the parsonage on it. And they're, they really wanna keep that, that old building to use as their. To continue using it as their art studio. R one zoning does provide for community meeting or recreation buildings. We don't have a definition for what those are in our ordinance, which has been kind of a problem. That is why we put. Um, definitions together, had to resort to the American planners. Uh, planning associations, planning dictionary and get definitions of what recreation is. Uh, what are some examples of indoor recreation and um, community center? Which it does that the. Some of the definitions used for recreation. Recreation buildings.
Okay, I, I guess I'm looking at this and these lines are confusing me with that back parcel there, which you get, which is parceled off. On each paper that I have and it's all.
May I, may I see your, may I?
I, I mean, I don't get this whole piece right here, I thought that was the second parcel, that had.
That's the church parcel.
This is what they want to separate out.
No, sir, they already have this, they do not own this, this is part of the church.
Church sits on the front.
They wanna do this, this is what the new proposed plat looks like. It would take this piece here.
Again, this parcel has nothing to do with. All this means nothing to me.
Absolutely.
It's just this section right here and they're.
And that's what this.
It's pretty close to those.
It has nothing to do with this.
Absolutely nothing, other than they share an easement.
And does this run out to the road?
No, sir, no. There isn't. Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, just basically put a line through here, going straight and then angle it after so far. Yeah. Yeah, it did, it goes ten feet to the left.
I guess, you know, you talked to one of the neighbors, of course, and he had some concerns and I talked to him, you talked to him. And does this set a precedence to us somehow, or why are we doing it just to be? Just so they can maybe sell?
Well, it meets A one zoning requirements, the way they're doing it. And part of it is, yes, they would be asking for this if they didn't wanna keep that, that former church building and continuous use. As an art studio. Um, I don't, and actually that's uh, I did send that question off to John. And it doesn't necessarily set any case law. Um, that the zoning commission takes each case on its own merits. And you also mentioned, um, talking to one of the neighbors. Um, on that email that I sent you guys, the, the copy of that, um, that was. Basically stating, if you guys had in your, he would have been better if the commission would have had in their. Um, recommendation that the only reason they were granting or, excuse me, recommending the recommendation to you guys. Was due to the fact there was already two principal structures there and. That it's not intended to create, however that was written in there, um. But it's in that email, did I send it to you?
I mean, I could have mentioned recommendation for the zoning. Mentioned properly only because there's two separate principal use structures on the property and that the request that rezoning. Is not establishing additional building lots in the area of A one's own district.
Yeah, right there where your cursor.
Back this way.
Yeah. From the LP tank, it goes to about that tree right there.
The piece behind it that we were confused by, is that agricultural?
Everything around it is agricultural.
So they're just wanting to make happen to the property.
Oh, excuse me, I misunderstood, no, this, they want this R one and this R one, cause neither of them would meet. The minimum lot size alone to maintain.
Actually, the piece I taught, or questioned about those, still owned by the church?
Yeah, this is church, that is different, this, we're looking at everything in that red line, or excuse me, every, well.
I understand, I just asked if that's still owned by the church.
Yeah, that's a cemetery.
The recommendations to follow the recommendations is on.
That would be me, yeah, um, I would ask if you guys would put this on. Uh, the calendar for a public hearing. For me, somebody.
Um. Okay, so the wishes of the board either to do that or to table and go take a look yourself and have a. Better idea, that's completely up to the board, I, I know the area. I, I, I see it both ways, I, I don't like these smaller parcels all over the place, but I can see that there's. Two definitely different structures there, if you will. I mean, whether they were used for the same purpose at one time, things have changed.
Um, and just so you guys maybe have a little more comfort, I know Nina you came in. Asking for the difference between R one and A one. Um, R one is a lot more restrictive in what you can do on that property than A one is. So there's um, fewer special exceptions in. Um. In R one and. There's a lot more special exception uses in, in A one. And a lot more actual uses um. For things that you can do with it.
So the public hearing would include the rezoning and the, and the approving the two separate parcel?
There, that was, yes, um, we, well, until that plant's approved, we, we, but. After that plant's approved, yes, cause that was the way that it could be rezoned.
That's the only reason we're doing it, so they had the two parts.
Correct.
Well, I mean, we can go by and see it in the time from now until the public hearing, this is just to set the public hearing to get the input to see. See how everybody feels about it, so I would make that motion.
Can I?
Yeah, sure.
So, just to add to this.
Okay.
I didn't know how to work that for sure, so I would rec, I would take the zoning commission's recommendations to go ahead and change that from an A one to an R one. With the stipulations only because there are structures already there. But I would also like to see, so there's an issue here with. The water or the church actually comes from the house. That this water has not been used for some time, it's been turned off. With that stipulation, I would like to see that water capped off. Just because of, if somebody would get the crazy idea of turning that back on and you got stagnant waters and then piping. It could have an issue.
So what if you do turn it on and the water's good, why would you really do well if the water's good?
It doesn't sound like that's good piping. Maybe the piping, but I don't know. The well itself is good because it's used on the house.
Yeah, but to me, it's, if it's owned by the same people, I mean, you know. There's, there's several properties around the county where one property.
Their share.
Services.
Sure, well, I get that, but they haven't been using this well and it. From my understanding in this meeting was that it is not usable going over to the church. So I'm looking at it from the.
And, and how would they cap that, could they cap it inside the church or would they have to cut it off at the source of the well?
I think it would, I don't know the answer to that.
So whatever their plumber decided to do, we're happy to know.
I don't know, I'm just a little leery with.
So to me, this opens a whole new can of worms, what you just mentioned here, so. At some point, if he's gonna use that, if I'm gonna call it the church facility as an art studio. He's certainly gonna need water and sewer in that building, I would support, right?
Um, I'm gonna punt to, to Nina here and. What, he just uses it and is there, is he, are they allowed to use like camping toilet? For it, it's only him, he doesn't open this to the public.
Oh.
It's not a public. He doesn't, he doesn't care about the water.
Yeah, I don't know why we should, yeah.
He doesn't care about the water and, you know, they've taught, you know. Sawdust toilet or whatever, camper toilet to use and, you know, haul things out like, like you would if you're camping. At one of our primitive sites.
This is just to send it to public hearing.
Right.
Yeah.
We're not approving or anything, right now, this is just to send it to public hearing, we're gonna take public comments before we actually make a motion to approve on this.
Absolutely.
Or reject.
Yeah, and I just wanna point something out here, so let's say this does get approved, it's in two separate parcels. It becomes two R one parcels, down the road, ten years, five years, twenty years. This comes for sale, if it is owned by these people, so if whoever has the parsonage buys that. That could, we could change the zoning on that back to A very easily. Um, if, if, you know, whoever's here knows that that's sitting out there like that. Um, cause we don't have any, any way of um, dog hearing things to for future, but. That, if that was owned by the same people, I would ask for that to be rezoned back to A one if I was here. Because you would combine the two legal descriptions to make it one parcel. And that could be um, an office initiated action, it wouldn't have to be one initiated and paid for by. The property owner, so it could reasonably go back to A one.
Okay, so to get my mind, get my mind straight again if I could. The, if I'm, if I'm correct, there's still a motion on the table and does your motion say, Don?
Okay, let's just go with the two structures, we've got the whole.
Okay, so you res, you totally rescinded that motion?
I rescinded my.
Back to zero, so Laura, you get in my mind, are we considering? A motion to have a public hearing set for the rezoning and parcel split or just the rezoning?
The rezoning, because.
That's it, don't go any more, that's it.
Yes.
Just wanna get this right, cause it seems like there's a lot of different things going on. Right now, it's one property and they are trying to survey them to.
Correct.
Right now, both of them are zoned A one.
Correct.
And this, what we're deciding right now is to just make both properties R one.
Correct.
Alright, the, the confusion is there's, it's not rezoned yet even, so there's not, there's only one parcel there yet. Question is if we're also a, approving the parcel split at the same public hearing, no?
They wouldn't go through with the parcel split if it's not rezoned.
So we gotta have another public hearing, John?
You guys don't approve all the splits. I mean, unless they need a minor subdivision. No. It's not a minor subdivision.
Back to my original motion, that we approved this to go to public here. So it can be discussed. We can hear comments and decide what to do from there.
I have a motion in a second to, uh, approve that the rezoning request for this partial. Go to a public hearing. Have any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay? Motion carried.
Okay, I have two other short things just to add. Um, I did send you guys an email, a head up, a heads up about, um. Someone in the northwest corner of the county potentially considering an animal feeding operation, an animal confinement. Which would, it would stay under the master matrix, it would standard the twenty, twenty-five hundred animal units. Uh, to keep it. You know, smaller and not having to go through more, more hoops is my understanding. So I've been talking to neighbors in that area. Um, an official, oh, I forget what it's called, it's the first one I've worked with, um. But their building plans have not been seen by this office or by, um, the Manchester D and R office. So they have not gone, it's not official. Nothing's happened.
Okay, so there is an issue with proximity to a cemetery, no, correct?
If I read your email, it's, it was just struck me funny, or struck me funny that, um. Setbacks from residential is twelve fifty, but setbacks from cemeteries is eighteen seventy.
Public gathering. Yeah, public. Yep, and, um.
The, the general notion of.
The, the trustee of that cemetery, their concern was, um. If you're doing a second cutting, the property across the road is hay. I mean, if you've done your first cutting, you'd be able to spread manure. Usually around Memorial Day, in which I'm like, yep, that's when my neighbors do theirs, when we have people camping in our front yard. Um, but anyway, that was his concern, but, um. If he went to a smaller confinement. Because this is the new wrinkle that came up yesterday. If he went with something smaller, he wouldn't have any setbacks if he kept it under, um. I think it was eleven hundred or twelve hundred animal units.
So in that respect, he can build two eleven hundred.
That was the question that's on the table.
All that with the master matrix, I'm gonna tell you what you're getting into.
Well, and it's the whole thing just with animal feeding operations, um, there's. Yeah, there's loopholes and everything. There's always another answer. Um, also working on the template for the leisure lake violation notices. Today was actually my, my target date to have those out, but it hasn't happened yet and I'm still waiting. Um, on John for, just to confirm, um, any. Any special actions we need to be taking, which we did find several, um. Nuisances that were acted on in Leisure Lake and some even went, uh, further than just the initial notice.
So that initial letter you sent out, did that go to everybody in Leisure Lake?
Yeah, and that was just a courtesy letter and that was, and basically it said, this is what we're gonna do, we're planning on doing. And if you don't have a nuisance property, we thank you, is to let you know. Yes, yes.
No, I'm just making sure.
I, I don't know, it's not on your agenda and the other, the other subdivision, North Bellevue, Northwest or?
Oh, sure.
Something that you give us for.
I just gave you everything that we did that night and the board, uh, excuse me, the zoning commission has recommended. Uh, approval of preliminary plat. They're going forward now and you guys, I don't really. There's nothing that tells me there's a step in here that involves you until the final plat. So I don't know, but there's still a.
So this is just informational, okay?
Yeah, and that, that went pretty smooth. It went very smooth. And just so you know, there's, for next month's meeting, there is another major subdivision plat coming through. Um, north of Bellevue, um, up by Ressler subdivision.
Appreciate the update and the input and all the above. Any other questions for Laura Ruth?
Thank you.
Keep up the good work, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're a little behind Lisa. Are you, you available?
I will yell to Marty.
Okay. Is Marty under your portion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning. Up at the care facility, we had a, a uni bed kind of like this, only maybe a little bit newer than that one. Uh, the coil leak in it, uh, rusted through, we could not get replacement parts. So we got three bids on new, new, new units installed. And they're very vague. Quote, it just says the number, what it is, insult. Um, the one company did send me. Um, pictures of it and what unit it will be and stuff like that. One, one has two proposals and the other one just has one, uh, in the, well, proposal, it's just. Uh, two different brands of. Units is all, as far as I can tell. I do believe all these will work, um. There's quite a bit of difference in the price, but.
That's why we give bids.
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge, they all will work, um. I have had, what, this company here has done work in the courthouse, uh, satisfactory. They installed the new boiler here in the courthouse. I think we had them do work at the care facility, uh, on their. Boiler, if I remember right.
Before you explain all that, are we, um, opening bids or you're disclosing bids, I should say?
Yeah.
Are we taking action? Yeah, okay, let's, let's go through the bids.
Okay.
It's under, uh, pending business under Lisa's.
The last item on my agenda.
Okay, are we ready?
Yep, sure.
Uh, the first bid I received is from the Crawford, Crawford Company. Um, the quote is for seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. The second one is from Heartland Mechanical Contracting. Option one is, is a train unit. And it is seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Option two is a air therm model or brand and it is eight thousand, three hundred dollars. The third one is from Service One. Um, give me a second here. It is, uh, made by First Cove and it is three thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Insult?
Yes. Um, Service One said it's like fourteen weeks out. Um, Heartland, I do. Give me a second. Yeah, Heartland, the option one is eighteen weeks out and option two is nine weeks out. And Crawford does not state that in their quote.
I imagine the supply chain is pretty much the same for all of it, um, as far as that goes, but.
Yeah, I would say. If there is, it's not stated on these.
So they all were able to look at what we needed in the facility, they looked at the facility.
Correct. Correct.
Said the third one, the last one you wrote out, the First Cove machine. They have done business before.
Yeah, Service One.
Service One, yes, they put the new boilers in the courthouse here. They. They did something with the boiler, they didn't install the boiler, but they did something with the boiler. I can't remember quite what it was.
I think they flushed a bunch of things at one time when we were having all the sediment.
Right, maybe that's what it was. The boiler, I have had no problem with it. They service it every year. You have to put new kits in it. They do it in a timely manner. They call me before they come, so I, I know they're here, um. I have no problem with it.
I was making a motion then that we go with the lowest bid as long as you don't have any issue with the company.
I have a motion in a second to approve the bid from Service One for insulation of a. They have an extra gender, Andrew Jackson Care Facility. Any further discussion?
That is purchase and installation, right, yes.
All in favor say aye. I oppose nay. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Is there any other updates quickly?
Uh, I do have a request for, from the adult probation officer. She said long door, wow, that room, she liked that wall between her and. Whoever's gonna be in that part of it to insulate it if we could.
And what's that about, to spring something?
Well, what I would recommend is we drill holes in the sheet rod and blow cellulose down in there and then just mud, mud, re-mud the holes. Yeah, I'll be in there, I'm painting the second room. All right.
Thanks, Marty. Okay.
So I need a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, board proceeding as written by auditor Smith. And authorize publication in the official newspaper. I make that motion.
A motion in second to approve the publication of the February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three board proceeding. All in favor say aye. I oppose nay.
I need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing. In the amount of nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, ninety-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
Motion second to prove the claims, uh, in the amount presented, I just got a few notes on that. Uh, I had a question I didn't get over to ask Shelley. This is one of them kind of a pass through from treasure to. Okay, so that was a three hundred thousand dollar insurance. That's basically was a pass through. We have a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar insurance bill on there for yearly insurance and we have some equipment, um, purchases on there.
That pays for all of the county insurance for the year and also putting the builder's risk insurance and it does clear up the issue between the sub well fund. Um, so that's what that transfer was for.
So it's not quite as painful as it looks, but.
Right, yes.
All those in favor say aye. I oppose nay. Motion carried.
I also needed a, a motion to approve the appointment of Carolyn Grant as the Van Buren Township clerk to fill a vacancy. And appoint Mark Lyon and Tracy Frome as Van Buren Township trustees to fill a vacancy until the next general election.
Motion in a second to approve Carolyn Grant as the Van Buren Township clerk to fill the vacancy as presented. All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion carried.
I also need a motion to approve the chair signature on a letter appointing Carolyn Grant as a Van Buren Township clerk effective February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. And we're doing this for banking purposes and other related purposes, uh, for Karen. And I have a letter prepared. I will second that.
Motion in second to approve Carolyn Grant as a signature, um. Uh, to have signature authorization, authorization, all those in favor say aye. I oppose nay. Motion carried.
I also need a motion to approve the publication in the three official county newspapers of the notice for the public hearing. On the maximum possible tax levy to be included in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four county budget, the public hearing date set for March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. At ten AM in the boardroom at the courthouse. I will make that motion.
Second.
Motion second to approve publication in the official newspapers for the public hearing date. On the maximum possible tax levy for fiscal twenty-four and that date to be March twenty-first, correct? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose nay. Motion carried. Thank you very much. And Luann, or would you yield to the assembly that's basically sitting here?
We have two of them, actually.
Yeah, there's, is that okay? All right, thank you. Uh, Jack, are you in here? Okay, so Rachel Anderson is with us today. If you'd like to come up, she's a representative for Congressman Marion Miller-Meeks. And she come today just to, I guess, to, uh, update us or.
Well, thank you for having me. Uh, I'm Rachel Anderson. I am a new district representative with Congresswoman Mariona Miller-Meeks. His office, I started in December, so I guess I can't be saying new for a lot longer, but. I've been trying to make it to the counties and, uh, the different towns to introduce myself. Uh, learn a little bit more about any prior, uh, top priorities or concern. Uh, within different communities jurisdictions. I know Jackson and Jones are new to our district with pre-districting, uh, so wanted to make. An effort to get out here and just, you know, show that our office is open. Uh, door figuratively always open, sometimes it's closed for lunch break, but, uh, I'll, I'll drop off my. Uh, contact information, my card, and then also our, uh. Case worker in office, Nick, he is really great with constituent services, so he works, uh, helping. People with federal agency issues and whatnot, so I'm more on the outreach side of things. I can still help with those. Uh, casework, but he's kind of the guy on the ground with the contacts at, uh. Customs immigration or helping people get passports, so that I'll leave out his card too, his and stuff. It says email in, um, our office line. As for the Congresswoman, she has, she is on, uh, Energy and Commerce Committee, so that. Kind of lines up with her top priorities, which healthcare is under Energy and Commerce, which is confusing to me, but there it is. And then energy, so she's, uh, so she likes to, you know, Iowa's a energy exporter, she. Iowa is kind of a leader on renewables, just kind of growing her own, uh. Energy, so she's extra, um, she's interested in. How we can take Iowa's leadership in the energy sector to the national level. She's background in an optometrist and a nurse in. The Army has also helped, um, her interest in healthcare and streamlining different healthcare policies. Uh, trying to provide fraud on the healthcare level and then. She received a waiver to be on the healthcare supplement for the Veterans Affairs. But she's, the Veterans Affairs as a metric, it's something that's near and dear to her heart. So that's a very quick overview, kind of top line of. Her role and then my role with being the boss, uh, and so basically. Like I said, I just want to introduce myself and see if there was anything that you wanted me to say to DC and to the Congresswoman. Yes. That would be great.
So yeah, leave your information, contacts here with Luann if you would, and if you got a couple of business cards or something, you can surely leave them. Um, I know that. So much on the federal level, but we do have some, it's legislation on the table at state level that we are concerned about, but.
Well, even on state level things, there's not, you know, it's not necessarily within our jurisdiction or around, but just knowing what's going on in the community. Is helpful in case.
So just a, this, uh, just overall question, so it seems that on the state level. And I don't know if this is like the same thing on the federal level. It seems like they. And I don't know if this is like the same thing on the federal level, it seems like they, the local control is a bad word.
Okay.
Anymore, and it seems like they're looking to take a lot of local control away, even on new Senate file. Three fourteen that I sent this morning, I got an email this morning at seven o'clock, six thirty, but um, it, it goes, it would originally, I looked back to what it was, and it was the compensation board. File, but now it's the redistricting for counties. Um, to if, if we have different dis- districts to vote in our supervisors, we won't have that option anymore. We are going to be forced to go to this option. Which is at large, basically, or option two, which was us, we all lived in a certain district, but the whole county voted for you.
Okay.
Option three is. Uh, district votes for you. There's three districts, but the only people in your district vote for you, that leaves this amount of people, I'm gonna throw rough numbers again. Fifteen thousand people in the county, that leaves five thousand voting for you, so it doesn't include the whole rest of the county in a small county. We know everybody, I know everybody from that side of the county to that side of the county, I think they should have a voice of who represents them. So I don't know why they're trying to take that control away from the local, don't we know what's best for our area?
And we're ultimately serving the entire county.
Right.
I mean, sitting here, you're serving.
We're making decisions for the whole county, yes.
Well, it seems funny how it morphed from compensation work then to supervisor districts.
And that again, that's at the local level again, but it's, it's something I don't.
It's good to, it's good to know what's going on and how it's impacting you and the things that.
And there's other things that maybe, you know, he would sit in on here, the, the MS districts and the human re- health, human health and. Districts, I mean, they're combining, of course, they're not taking input basically from our level. You know, they're, they're, they're seeming to take. Control, I, I mean, they're breaking down. Another legislation to break down departments from thirty three departments to sixteen departments. So I guess I read a lot of it and it, and a lot of them departments seem like they fall in, you could put three of them departments in the same department, I don't know, it, it appears like they. What that is, I don't know, I guess it's, it's. It, it's just the bottom line story is that everybody is upset across. The state, I would say, that if you mention local control at the state level. It's a bad, it's a bad word, it's you're shut down.
That we're even looking at what they're gonna do with tax levies next year and the potential implications thereof, combining different tax levies to prevent. As they say, the over taxation of people, we get. It really makes it difficult for us to do our job, so. And many growth is another.
You know, how, it's hard, you, you want growth? But then you're gonna limit to what, what it's gonna, how we can do that per se? And then if we get growth, you can't tax more than X amount of percent, so I don't know, some of the, some of the things seem to contradict themselves that. Yeah, we like this, but we can't, we won't let you do it, you know, so I, I don't know, it just appears to be contradictory, but. As we're telling some stuff at you, you're not aware of the local level, I suppose.
I've, I've heard of it, I mean, I'm. It doesn't seem like there's a lot of ground I have to cover, so I cover Scott. Clinton, Cedar, Jackson Jones, and then Johnson, so I mean, it's not. A whole lot, but just trying to navigate schedules and making sure that I can get in front of people, but it is something that I've been hearing from other counties and cities. Around, around where I've been covering, I should also mention, we should be getting. Uh, guidance this week on community project funding or formerly known as earmarks. Or the district last year, I'm not. Well, I checked the list, you all are on our kind of listserv of the mass mail, that will be the original guidance that comes from our legislative director. If you have any questions, it's a two-way street, ask away.
Uh, just gonna say, don't tease us about money that could be coming when we got some money given from another representative that seems to have more. Loops and hoops to jump through and strings attached and secondary, yeah, you get it, but you gotta meet the fourteen thousand pieces of criteria that says probably not gonna get it, we've been struggling for over a year. To meet those loops and hoops to get the, the funding that was promised.
Is it with the community project funding or was that different?
I, I can't say what it was true, um.
We've had to reapply this, I think around two or three times now, trying to.
I believe this is.
You can talk later about it, but.
Yeah, if you're having, if you're having issues with getting receiving funding or whatnot or grant, we have uh somebody in our office who helps with grants and whatnot, so. Please send that my way, the community project funding is a little bit of a different, it's money that's appropriated through the discretionary spending budget already in. Congress and then each member gets a certain amount of projects, so last year we were, the district two was allocated fifteen projects. Uh, the, of the fifteen, twelve projects were approved. So essentially, different communities will send their top projects, generally infrastructure is favorable just because it has the most impact, it's very tangible. Uh, that doesn't mean that.
So it's based on infrastructure.
Not just infrastructure, but I think.
Bridges?
Iowa.
Two hundred and fifty of them, yeah.
Yeah. That's a lot, yeah, so, so there's, guidance will be on, you know, what, what projects will qualify, but so. Communities in the district can submit their priorities to, to our office as a potential. Uh, for funding and then the office will select up to fifteen and then those get submitted to. The appropriations committee, so it's kind of a lengthy process, it goes through a bunch of different committees and then. Last year's community project funding was announced. And the awardees were announced in January because that's when they passed the budget, so. It, it's a longer process, but it's, but it, it's kind of an exciting thing to. See money that's already in the federal budget that the district, local communities can actually. Use to better the community. I, I, I think it would is a different setup than the grant. That you're talking about, cause I, I know there, it's not the same hurdles, I mean, it has to go through a bunch of committees and subcommittees and whatnot, but it's not.
It's, it's as simple as we didn't know. How to proceed and, and maybe the, where we got the information from to begin with, really didn't know how to proceed, so we're catching up with. How it should have been done from the get-go, and we're somewhat too late on that project, but may I ask where you're from?
I'm originally from Minnesota.
And where do you live now?
I'm in Davenport.
Okay, so I'm gonna suggest. You know, it could be as simple as this is what Don is talking about, you know, infrastructure money or bridges or whatever, could be as simple as this, if you take about fifteen or twenty miles of gravel road before you get back into. God or county, it could be as simple as providing each county with X amount of. Um, aggregate to either reconstruct. Or to rebuild some of our roads that are way behind. Uh, it's as simple as that, we need funding to just simply make it passable on our gravel roads. I mean, we are one county that's a little behind because of, um, we really didn't have a master plan or a plan to go move forward twenty years ago. But now we have a plan, but somehow we gotta pay for it.
Okay.
You know, we gotta reconstruct them because they weren't made for thirty semis a day, they were made for a.
Right.
Gravity box and a John, a forty twenty.
Right out here to Walmart, turn left.
Yeah, take, take that.
Bring you right back into town. I do.
That will take you right back on the highway. Thirteen, thirteenth street.
Thirteenth straight up, that's actually a turn on hospital. I will, I lived, I lived in Montauk for a little bit, which my coworkers make fun of me, cause I drop it in, that's my little. I spent some time on rural roads and I've had to be towed up the ice as per the rule, yeah.
No, but it is, it could be that simple, just funding for simple projects, it's not a, not a, oh big, oh my god, I need to, I mean, we're very fortunate to have. The McCoget River, but if we got five bridges that cross the McCoget River, five hundred feet long, we just can't afford it, yeah. But.
Well, if there's anything you need or any of the county offices, please don't hesitate, uh, like I said, I'll leave my contact information, please don't hesitate to reach out to our office, if you have any. Concerns or priorities that you want to flag for us, uh, we can look into bills, uh, and then. If you go to the capital, also let us know and we'll, if you want to speak to the Congresswoman or try to arrange capital to her, we. We can try to set that up with the office, we wanna be, we wanna be partners, we wanna collaborate, we don't want it to be. Now, we're just up here and you're down here and there's no communication, because it's.
We sure appreciate taking time.
You, my job doesn't matter.
We sure appreciate, appreciate you taking your time to come up here and see us and, and uh, it's a nice day today, but.
It is a nice day.
Yeah, so we appreciate that and, and tell the Senator, we thank her for her work being done and uh. And again, leave your information with abandon and we'd be in touch and if we need to be and again, appreciate it and have a second.
Thank you so much.
Thanks Rachel. Alright, Jack, I apologize for the wait. I guess, I'm sorry ma'am, are you here for?
Um, I was just here to learn and listen, and I, I think I may have missed the section that I was most concerned with, it is the roads.
Oh.
And I just wanted to pose a few questions to the board regarding.
We are uh past the visitor's section, but um, if it's okay with the board, I would gladly have you come up and. Uh, state your opinion and ask your questions, and if we can, uh, we can answer any questions, we surely will briefly, yes.
Okay.
Come on up.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, your name, I missed it?
I'm Shawna McFoy.
Okay. So Shawna, just starting out, I guess, I just want to inform you a little bit, so our co- our five-year road plan was Thursday evening, this Thursday evening. Invited everybody, it was in the paper, it was published, uh, we put it on the radio, so if, and I apologize that you missed that, we didn't get to you. But um, bottom line is, we gotta get the water up our gravel roads. We have to get the water up our gravel road, so um, previously, we did not really have a plan in place, other than putting rock on and, and. Our, our roads don't have the structure or the cross-section, cross-section, our new engineer likes to say. Who is very good, by the way, and uh, he has a plan, he has a restructure plan, so many miles in each district to restructure. Put the base that it needs underneath it, so it stays and, and so. We have the plan, we had it initiated and we have to maintain it, so we know that, um, again, it's a money issue. And I've, I gender, how many calls a day, I don't know, I'm wrong, it's missing. I, I get it, I drive them, I understand them, I drive the school bus and I worry about my, my cargo and, you know, it's, it's uh.
Right now with the plans that we've got, we're gonna, I think we're about four or fifty miles of travelable gravel roads. His, his goal is to be crowned roughly a hundred and, a hundred and ten miles of those this year, so it's gonna be a lengthy process to get all the roads. Um, he's gone off, um, average daily travel rates, the heaviest travel roads are gonna get them first. And they're broken up about ten miles throughout the greater district, so we have a plan, it's just gonna take some time, so.
My understanding, my question was, is that I've done a lot of research, I, when there's a problem, I usually try to find answers. And I wondered if the engineer has considered installing a grid system to hold the aggregate in place. And help stabilize the road that, I live on two seventeen, if any of you have been out there, it is a single track. I have seen pictures of roads in Africa that are better than this and in the jungle areas, it is just impossible, it is totally impossible. I'm not sure I can get home. That being said, you know, I, I, I totally understand how hard this is and how the township is working to. They're out there every day, but doing the same thing over and over and over again. And what really ignited my interest in coming here is the bids for the aggregate, it's like, why, why, why? Are you gonna put rock down when all of it ends up in the wheel wells of our vehicle? That's where it's at, it doesn't last twenty four hours, it does not.
So I guess with that being said, uh, we've talked about all, everything you have said and. We, we've discussed about larger aggregate, like two-inch stuff, and we have put some two-inch stuff in major, major holes with the feed truck got stuck and such. Um, we have a road just in north. Northwestern Jackson County right now, so somebody must said I got stuck and, of course, he either had a dozer or several large machines to pull it out, so. Now it's not only ruined in that section, but the rest of the road, road is ruined also. So uh, it is, it is a battle, we are using clean stone as, as we need it. And as much as we can haul at a time, we have ten trucks on the road every day, and when it rains an inch, it's hard for them to travel in roads also. I mean, we're just make bigger runs, if we put them on the road with fifteen ton of rock in, I can't put my grader on the road because he has eight-inch rods now. And now we gotta try to fix them eight-inch rods, well, we, we need, I mean, January has not been pleasant to us for rain, we love the moisture, again. But it doesn't do our gravel roads any good, we have to get our water off of the, off of the road, and we have six hundred miles of, of gravel roads. Um, so.
He made that comment, but it was, there were some of them were leveled.
So, um, yeah, I mean, we are, we do have a plan and he does have a plan as far as, like you say, to maintain it, to keep the crown. Bring them in where they're supposed to be, the size of the road is supposed to be, and not dip down in the middle, instead we need that ground and we have to maintain it, so. After we get this program in place, hopefully, we can maintain it, and he said like his plan is. They should be restructured every four years.
I have a bit of a, you know, it's a, I know it's a conundrum for the county to. I mean, the county's lifeblood is agriculture, but we have some of the largest, most destructive vehicles on the road that travel that. Um, I, I'm concerned for public safety, I don't think the ambulance could get to us, I do not, I don't think the fire truck could get to us. And the sheriff would probably just give up, I don't know, so.
And, and certainly, and, and this has, has come up last four years or five years also in legislation, and I don't want your profession or your husband's profession maybe, but um. Agricultural is a large part of Jackson County, and this agricultural machinery has gotten much, much, much larger, but if you bring up the fact. That they're not taxed on any diet fuel that they use, so that's not helping our road infrastructure anyway, if they're not paying any tax on the fuel that they buy.
That's what I, you know, that was my other concern is that we, we live near two twenty pitches, when you mentioned the word confined animal. Operation, one of previous speakers, my hair just practically burst into flame because of the incredible amount of traffic that we have related to those two. Actually, we have three within close proximity, um, so if there's another one being built. You know, that's, I know, it is, it's important for for commerce, but the thing is, is are they taxed in any way for the extra traffic that they generate? I mean, when they bring out hogs, and they do that every three months, you know.
And the feed to feed them.
The twenty five hundred in, out, twenty five hundred more in.
Yeah.
And, and that's one building, like I said, we're surrounded by three. So it's just, there's gotta be some way to make it equitable, you know, and I don't even wanna go, I do not wanna go till the whole thing is. Our property values have sunk because we had a buyer for our property. Somebody would look at that road and it is impassable to anything but another tractor or a bulldozer.
I'm sorry, is it Shannon, is it?
Shawna.
Shawna. Uh, Shawna, what, what road is that again?
Two seventeen.
Two hundred Northwest County.
Two hundred seventeenth Avenue or Street, ma'am?
It's two hundred seventeen Street, then we drag on two twenty second Street and one thirteen. To get, try to get onto Harp Service Road. So it's two miles of pure hell, that's all I can tell you.
Yeah, and, and I stand, I, I, I feel your pain, I really do, and I, we're working at it and. Trust me, the, the county guys are out there working on it every day, I talked to them at six thirty this morning, he says, I got, I'm out on the. All the rock and they're all rock and we even talked about contracting. Other drivers, you know, private drivers to come in and haul it, it all comes with a price tag.
I just, I find it, it's just, it's that old definition of insanity when you keep doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. Dumping rock on it is not the answer, it lasts about twenty four hours and that is.
I can't allow them to fix that road right now, I can't, I can't be, I can't restructure that road right now.
No, I understand, I just.
So now I have to dump rock off.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it stopped, yeah, but that's, and I don't even wanna think about what it's costing the county to do that every day.
Just know that we have bought equipment that is specially designed to put, um, to put the crown back in the gravel roads. Um, we actually just finalized the purchase of the last two pieces today, um, and with that, we are implementing our plan, it's gonna be a long tedious plan, it's gonna take several years. A short, yours is a relatively short gravel road, if I'm not mistaken, running.
Yeah, it runs between South Gary and. Yeah, it runs between South Gary and.
But we're gonna try to, hopefully, I don't have my list of the roads in your area that we're gonna actually uh, re crown this year, um. But over the next four years, we should be able to hit hopefully every gravel road in Jackson County. And get that water draining off, because the more the water drains off, the drier they stay. The more they stay dry, the, the, the less potholes, washboards and things we're gonna have to deal with, so.
That's what I wondered, because the land area, if you can actually patch it with grid, get that recycled rubber grid that holds the aggregate in place to stabilize the road bed. And just do it on those really hideous sections that are, you know, have washboards and potholes this deep and flooded. I'm, I'm not asking for them and when I truly, I understand, I totally do, but. Even just stabilizing those sections where the county trucks or the township trucks are out there dumping rock every day. To make some sort of system to hold that in place, again, since it's a good portion that's in our wheel wells of our vehicle.
I want to reiterate, we are on your side.
I know.
Gentlemen, you may wanna talk to it right in that. I'm not passing, I'm passing on here, but he is the guy with the blaster plan, yeah.
So Shawna, we do have good, a good program and he ran this program in the other county and, you know, we do believe. I've driven a lot of them roads. They're not perfect this year either, because this year has been a year from. But I do believe our plan we have going forward and even if, even if that road isn't on the re crowning. Section that's gonna get done this way, the graders and the trucks are supposed to be kind of working everything slowly that way. And trying to get some of these lips cut off and so that the water will drain off, so. We do hope that with this next summer, the work that they can get out and get done. Hopefully, next year, we'll see a big improvement coming forward.
I appreciate your patience, I, one more quick question, will we be notified when we're gonna be, when our road is, is going to be in that mix?
Absolutely, because there's a chance that depending on what, um. What stages are in with reconstruction that it might not be possible, you might have to find another way out.
Okay, the, the reason I ask is because of the dreaded dust control. That we try to, you know, have applied to keep it. The most that we all inhale to a minimum, um, if, you know, we just don't wanna.
You don't wanna put that down and have them have it and tear it up, yes, no.
That was my next question.
As that would be, so to get your dust control permit, you have to go through the engineer's office, so they will know at that time.
They would know that.
Yes, yes.
Well, again, I, I thank you for your patience, for listening to my emotional brain.
That's all right, we sure appreciate you coming in again, a lot of these questions. Even maybe in the future, instead of coming to the board and we're relaying them to the engineer. Previously, we didn't really have an engineer would, would listen to a lot of, um. Um, complaints and such, but we would, he, our engineer really wants to hear it from you.
Okay.
So call the engineer's office, yeah.
And fill out a work, of one of the work order forms, you know, talking about on the smart doorstep.
Pass that along to Todd, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I'm retired too.
Calling back for some work, work, work issues, Jack, you wanna join us?
I would be.
Can you drive a dump truck? You wouldn't want me to.
More complaints.
You would have them.
Good morning, welcome, good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Not to, not to, not to see your co-part is kinda discouraging, but I hear she doing well.
Well, as far as I know, she is. Sometimes tries to figure out what she can do with me.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway.
Well, she's probably glad to have you right now when she's down and out a little bit.
Well, she's doing fine.
Yeah, that's what I hear.
Yeah, um, first thing I'll say today is that yesterday's meeting was a little frustrating. Not because of anything that Lori or anybody else did, but we didn't have a quorum. So we couldn't take action on anything and yesterday was to be our day to really discuss the twenty-four budget. And uh, we couldn't take action on it and I guess uh, Jones County's uh. Uh coordinator of services, Julie did not know that the new, a newly appointed person wasn't coming. And so, and we needed to have five of the eight there and they weren't, so we discussed a lot of stuff, but. We're gonna be doubled up next month trying to get everything taken care of before the deadline. But I'll just tell you that the proposed budget um, for twenty-four is sixteen million, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. Eight hundred, sixteen million, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and four dollars and.
Is that the region or?
That's the region, oh yes, and um, uh. Most of that is through the Robert Young Center Crisis Service, their, their proposed budget for all of the services that they provide. Was a little over twelve million and um. Right now, the state, the state per capita for two thousand and thirteen. Yeah, or twenty-three is thirty-eight dollars per capita, twenty-four, it's going to be forty dollars per capita. And in twenty-five, it'll be forty-two dollars per capita. And um, uh, I wholly agree with what you said earlier, um, Mike, is how. The state is trying to take away all of our local control. Uh, one of the big things that we discussed yesterday was the compensation or comp. How, what, what, who's gonna be on the board? And how they're going to put that together. And we were told that um, we have to, might have to merge with another region or there might be changes. Lori doesn't think that'll happen because of the size of our region, they said three hundred thousand people or more in a region and we are. Um, and we have, we have the five counties, so. Um, the other thing they talked about was, um, there might not. We might not be able to have a supervisor or representative from the Board of Supervisors as, um. From all of the counties, but they changed it. The members of the other governing board shall consist of the following. Members representing the Board of Supervisors of each county comprising the region. But they shall not exceed forty-nine percent of the total membership. And so they've added a lot of, a, a lot of additional members to the board. One would be a member from, uh, who is an adult person who utilizes mental health and disability services. Or an actively involved relative of such an adult person. One mem- member representing adult services. One member representing children's behavioral health services or somebody that works with that child. One member representing the, the education, which we currently do have, and we do currently have somebody that is on, um. Uh, that works with services. Uh, the region member shall be designated by the regional children's advisory council. And one representing law enforcement is another one and one representing judicial system. So it will be a much larger board and so with five supervisors serving on it, we would not comprise more than forty-nine percent. So the boards will still have some local control with what's going on with the region. Um. Uh, challenge to change is something we've talked about before and they have hired somebody to coordinate those services. Every one of the hundred and twenty-five schools in our region will all have training. Every, every school will have training for the challenge to change. They just got finished having some uh, other training for law enforcement, um, trauma and uh, firemen. And Jackson County will have a training session next week, they will be coming up here to train for the uh, uh. Challenge. And then um, mobile crisis in Jackson County, there were six calls last month. Where the mobile crisis unit came to Jackson County to assist. They're also going to be having a class for dispatchers in law enforcement centers, as they said, there's so many. So many of the dispatchers, they're trying to deal with these people that have problems and. It basically causes them to have some problems too, so they wanna work with them and try to get them, the, the training that they need. Another one that they're working with is uh, Early Childhood Iowa, um, they have uh, Christine is having a session with. All of the people, all of the state is working with trying to come up with some information and training for people. From zero to four years of age for the children and they're training all of the advisors in the different ECI, ECI. Um, territories and they're in the process of doing that and they have a big seminar on. March seventh and eighth in, at the casino in Davenport, in the, in the meeting room. And so that'll be for two days and she's coordinating that, um. We're having, uh. Actually, we're spending, right now, we're spending approximately a million dollars a month with the Robert Young Center. And um, ACQ is the uh, the, the program for the ECI. Very, I forget about ECI, it's ECI, um, their coordinator. Um, and basically direct training for daycares and, and Head Start and those individuals. Another thing that they talked about is they're putting together a program that is gray matters. And it's going to be for college students and for high school students and it. Gray matter is right up here, is in, in the brains and um, I know they said that they have one started at Saint Ambrose. And they have two schools, but she did not indicate who those schools were, but they're trying to get that information out to all of the. High schools um, in um, our region and um, all of the colleges. And they also talked a great deal about um, suicide and the fact that. Some of the schools even have, they've learned through visits and, and seminars and stuff. There are some school systems in our, in our region that actually have suicide packs. Um, amongst their students, so they're trying to get to them and trying to see what they can do. To train them and to educate not only the students, but also the faculty. So that there's a way that they can maybe see a signal, um, it's, we talked about a young. Girl that committed suicide and the next two days later, her boyfriend committed suicide. And so it's, it's, it's really, really, really sad what's going on in, in the world today.
I, I just wanna reiterate to, the challenge to change, I think that's an excellent program that they're trying to implement and get that started again. The, the program they started here a couple of years ago through the, for the D, through the DCAT. Where it's the, the positive message type program where, you know, they recognize and they do the studies and recognize these individuals. Or adolescents, I should say, but if they could start at elementary level, I, I think that's where they need to catch them. And, and start this if we can, I, I don't know how we implement that adolescent uh, program, but this, this thing is working, I mean, they send. These messages come automatic to these children in the morning where they will just get a positive message on their phone. Other than uh, something that somebody bullying, I mean, they threw out, threw out today or timeframe, whatever they think and it. The most, they will get a positive message from somebody just.
Well, every one of the hundred and twenty-five schools. Are all supposed to have somebody that is trained to be the coordinator for the challenge to change. And um, Christine says they're doing pretty well getting those people trained. And I know that, that they had a seminar and it was limited to a hundred and she said every spot was filled. And that meeting that's going to be the first of March uh, is taking those that didn't get in. And it's open to as many people as that want to come to that too, and that's also open to law enforcement. Uh, to firemen, to uh, jailers, anybody that wants to come and it's to talk about. How, how they can recognize something that's going on with an individual. And so it, it should be a really good program I'm planning to go, um, and uh, I'm not gonna go to the casino though. I'll let you do that.
You can't win if you don't play, Jack, I'm just saying.
I cannot win that, because I don't play, but um, uh. Lynn wasn't able to be there, she would be there next week, but uh, or next month, but um. As I said, we couldn't have our agenda, so I, or, or, we couldn't carry through with anything and so I did. Ask Luanne for John Bell's phone number from, from Cedar County to see if he can't either. Make sure that we know somebody's not coming, we had, we had a quorum to count those that are zoomed in, but you can't.
You can't?
No, we can't.
I thought they.
Has to be a majority in person for, for now, no, we're.
Yeah, well, they better think about changing some of that.
So there's been an ego correspondence between like John or Jim Irwin and the Workforce Development, Mississippi Valley and. There's several supervisors that said, I don't wanna go to extra training, if I can't zoom this, I need participating and there's a big. There's just a lot of that going around right now and with the workloads everybody's carrying and stuff, so. It's being felt, not just the mental health, I'm sure all the, but you know, and. When workforce development with thirty-seven percent of the counties have opted out of the program entirely, they want nothing to do with it, so. Um, it'll get interesting here, because.
Well, I think it will, because there's been a lot of, uh, a lot of dissension between the state and the regions.
Well, you go regionalizing, I mean, like this guy said, I read the email, but he's traveling three hours. And, and you pass a couple motion to do business, that's fine, but you should be able to do that without traveling three hours, I mean. That just disrupt, disrupts your whole plan for the whole day.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Health and human services are in the same boat, you know, they're.
He's from Lee County, he's the cochlear and the last meeting in December, he traveled. An hour and a half to get there and was told there's no quorum, come back tomorrow and he said, absolutely not.
Did he say it like that?
Yeah, and he, he's the one that said I am.
That's very polite.
So, I, I, the, the plight of what we're having to deal with and. I'm nervous seeing with workforce development, what, if, as we try to proceed with what we're supposed to be doing. Is it for not, because if you have the most happened, the state opting out of the program, the state's probably gonna change the program and.
But will it be better, you know, that's the sad thing, right? The state is just not.
Again, if the state's gonna control everything we do. What is our purpose at, at some point, you know, I mean.
Well, it's, we're still in the process, um, with the Human Service Council, trying to get everything worked out so that the Health Department and. Human Services with their, with the merger, we're still trying to figure out who will serve on that board, um. Will it be weighted health or will it be weighted human services and. What the backgrounds have to be about the individuals and we've been discussing that for the last several months, I'm trying to figure out. How that's all gonna pan out and it just seems like, it just seems like the state wants to roll, run everything. And I did, I hadn't heard about your supervisor districts till I was.
I just came out today, Mike sent this up. It, it, it was always legislation there, but it looks like they attached it to the com board legislation, you know. There's about four or five different proposals for the com boards going through and the way I read it back. Uh, they said this morning it was sent to file three fourteen, where I looked back at my legislative notes for Friday when they sent them, three fourteen was a com board, so. I, I don't know what happened and it passed yesterday already through the senate hearing, so it's not through the. Through the senate or the house yet, I don't think, I tried calling couple legislated slang and they've probably seen it was me and didn't answer, so I, I. So I don't know, I, I, it's, it's, I mean, you know, the whole tax reform thing. But the country, as you know, Jack, they've done it before in the middle of a budget season and it just sold the rents into it and. And they've said, be prepared, be prepared for next year also, so. You wanna provide services, but how do you pay for the services?
That's okay, all those, I mean, we have a really hard time getting people to provide services in mental health areas. Um, there's not psychiatrists, not, there are not counselors. And um, se- several of the programs that we've tried to implement, we've given the okay to, to put them in place. But there's nobody to hire to do the, to provide the service.
The other issue, yeah.
That's the issue, I mean, and last I heard, there were four people in the psychiatry department. That's the issue, I mean, and last I heard, there were four people in the psychiatry department at the University of Iowa.
Yeah. I mean, you look at, you look at all them programs, I mean, you look at. Uh you know, the E M A uh legislation and and how are we gonna levy for this, and what do we do? I mean, how can you take away from all the volunteers that we have, just in our little county? You know, better than EMS or or fire rescue or whatever it may be. How how do you not do something for them, but then they won't give us any funding to do it?
Yeah, and then had to relate to our meeting yesterday, because she was feeling because they were taking somebody by ambulance to another city, so you know.
Yeah.
Uh it 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 is.
So I don't know, I sure appreciate again what you and Lynn do there, and I know it's it's. It's been mind boggling for the last uh thirty five years, yeah, because that's what you want to say. The changes that you went through and uh the changes that are coming.
Funny, when I was reading through the material that we got from our meeting yesterday, they were talking about um. In the material was talking about back when when they merged the regions, and that's when I was on the, I was chairman of the mental health. Commission in in Des Moines. And so we went through all of those law changes, and I wasn't happy about it then, and I'm not sure I'm happy about it now, but there's. The for some reason, the state thinks they need to tell us how they how to operate. That's not always the best way to do it.
Uh yeah, again, I tried to call a couple letters later this morning, but I didn't get through, so. Well, I got their voice back, and I did not leave it that. Normally they'll call back, but yeah, I mean, it's. It's it's a battle, I can see their battle too at some point, you know, I mean, maybe they have a mission and um. I I know this this general, this general levy thing is is a huge issue too, with there's thirty three counties that are over the three fifty. Max levy and. They're not happy about it, I mean, they're, what do we do, cut services? Do we say we don't have a fire truck for you, we don't have, we don't have a deputy for you to come out, so.
We were talking about that yesterday about the tax maximum tax levying and and uh Ken Beck said uh. Jeff Sorenson, how are you guys doing with yours, he said, well, our um evaluations went up so much. In Muscatine County, he says, we don't have a problem at all, so. And Dickens says, well, could you send that some of that to us?
I mean, and I see that in 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 the industry, in the real estate industry, with the what the market sales have done. Uh and and then I see what we've got for extra revenue over the past year, and it's a can't be.
And then the state takes it back.
Well, yeah, they, you know, I mean, but I, you know, when when a private individual comes and says her. Her values have diminished, I I have a hard time believing that, Sean, I have a hard time.
Well, I don't envy you. And like I said, well, my last day, I was not gonna miss the budgeting. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, Jack, and thanks for helping us out and.
My pleasure.
Good luck with the forum there.
Wish Lynn the best, will you?
We'll do that.
Yeah, we'll do that. Yeah, thanks. Okay, well, we're getting closer here, uh boards and commission reports. Oh, Luanne, we skipped her, yeah, we got her marked off. Very little time today.
I'll try to be quick.
I got you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is it still, yeah, we're. Morning hours.
And I think all I have to use the calendar, so we'll be here long. Oh, wow.
Yeah, I get it.
Okay, this week on the calendar, Wednesday, March first at nine AM um is Don's. Um debut on Kimmy Q's Just Top Show.
Is that, it's a month still yet?
It has been so far, but.
Feel like you were just on it.
I got bumped back a week, so we're a little bit closer, he got moved up a week, so we are. Um six o'clock um tomorrow evening is nine one one service board meeting for Mike and Lynn. And at six o'clock is also the Coca River Watershed Management Authorities by Annual Meeting in Monticello for Don. And it's for any of you that want to go, but I don't know how you're gonna divide that up, so. Um Thursday, March second at eleven AM is the Tag Transit Action Group meeting by Zoom for Don. Friday, March third at eleven AM is the ISAC legislative update by Zoom for Mike. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, March seventh. At nine AM. And that afternoon, there's tentatively a green space redevelopment meeting. On by like at the library or by Zoom, and none of you have really picked that up yet, so I don't know who might attend that. And at five o'clock that night is tentatively a Mississippi Valley Workforce Executive Meeting for Don. By Zoom, and I get, I don't know if we're even on the executive committee, because they haven't told me yet, so. So it's just tentatively on there, case.
When was that?
Um next Tuesday night to seven at five o'clock. And that is all I have for you today.
Thank you very much. Okay, new business or anything for the board, or their um board or commission reports that do you like to share?
Last Friday, we had a McCooker leadership can uh meeting. And Josh pulled in there, he talked about um a few things going on with the city. And the biggest thing that affected us was the uh with the bridge being completed south of town. Um they're proceeding with some lighting, and he was talking to Todd about this. As far as apply uh putting up poles and lights along the new path every one hundred and seventy five feet, hundred and fifty feet. And the responsibility of the bills they're in for electricity, according to city county boundaries and such. He just hopes that'll be supported when it comes over here, he said it's all been worked to Todd and everything seems to go. That's the biggest thing that came out of her.
I I did have the uh legislative work session every Friday again too, um I think you probably got the updates. True via email legislative updates, is there anything in particular that? I mean, we just dissect them a little further and further during that meeting, but uh again, send a file one eighty one. Uh limit your growth to three, you know, um to X amount. And they've still hold the levy at three fifty, and you know, they have statewide limitations for this and. Um definitely, definitely not final, they said, definitely not final, so there'll be many changes to that, so. A homestead credit again, they're talking about that, they implement something to that effect, they're talking could affect the state by three hundred million dollars. So um again, they have a lot of legislation on the table that would seem to cost the locals a lot of funding. Um they're talking about moving commercial industrial, rollback, um again, would cost us. Uh no more lux- local option sales tax, they're gonna combine it with uh. Um sales tax rated by a penny and and that's what they're proposing and give three eight cents to Iowa. Uh what they talked about for ten or twelve years, whatever it has been. Um. Uh again, to restructure on all these, you got, you got the DHS, you got the mental health, you got judiciary. You got the workforce, they're talking about restructuring all of them departments and um. Have it state run, basically, what they're doing, they have the judicial system and and the workforce and the mental health and. They're all looking at taking them over ourselves, and that would mean no local controls. Uh a lot of discussion about the E M A levy, how to set, who's the senate, who's the commission. Um well, again, would not involve the supervisor, is what they claim, so. I don't know how we can do that with the E M, we each have a, they each have an E M A director, so. How can we not coordinate to what his budget might be and what he needs to do, so. For our area, our area is much different than the metropolitan area or other areas, so. And I go back to the comp board, uh there was like four or five just different proposals, legislation on the board now, apparently. Uh this has been added to it, so. Uh discussion on eminent eminent domain, of course, and that's pretty much across the table. Um and the latest, latest that was thrown in said it would need ninety percent of landowner participation before. Then anything could even attempt in the domain along that poor pipeline. Uh they talked about the mental health, the being the five, the the carryover. Um was at five percent, they trying to get fifteen, it looks like they're gonna get a ten percent. Carryover was what they were happy with, that it was really hard for them to argue the point, because there is a sixty three million dollar. Region wide carryover. So and a lot of these bills, they're, the ISAC is not registered opposed or unopposed at this point till they get. Input from us and the, you've seen the email this morning that they're looking for input for us, from us on the local control as far as the. Where we go with it? Do we have a budget work session scheduled yet, or I suppose there's a few things done? You know, we just set the production, okay. They said, do we still get these? Are they still somewhere? The work order type thing, this one hasn't been, I don't know if that's. This one hasn't been updated for a long time, it's hard. Do they, do we get a list of them somewhere else, somewhere? Weekend, that'd be great, just to see where we're at from how far back it go.
Motion to adjourn.
Can I give my?
I thought he was just rambling.
Um here's from, they wanted me to give them out, that's from the childhood. Yeah, I did that meeting last night, their big thing right now, they're pushing it, trying to get the I smile program. That's just their annual report that I gave you, their I smile program up and running. Um. So that's kind of helping the underinsured or no dental insurance children, they're really trying to hit the. One to five to get them in to get preventative healthcare going before problems really get started. Um so um the issue is, a lot of people, a lot of dentist office, like anything, they're not getting the funding, so they're not accepting certain. Insurances, and they gave us a list of like different insurance or different. Providers and what they take and what they don't take. Um so that was kind of the main, main thing with that, and they are going around and kind of. Doing the stop or stopping in and doing the visits on all the different like childcare head start. Such as that, that's in the process this month. Um Grant Wood scenic byways. They got a lot of different, so they got what they called a. Kind of like a trading card deal going on, but they wanted local. Um people of interest from like the past, so some of our. Proposals that got put out for our area was like the caves, Black Lake, the Decker House, how it. From the past history, um William Brown in the Horse Cave, Horse Cave, Horse Cave. Up in Bellevue area, I believe. That was. Um John Henry Weber was um um American fur trader. And he was kind of a.
So what's the proposal there, I missed that one too.
So they're they're trying to get people to. Do like stops, they say like the how Pokemon, I don't know, was around and a big thing. They're trying to get different stops, so that if you show up in this area. You get points or credits, it's trying to just bring people through your areas to see different spots. And then hopefully, obviously, they're stopping at your.
Well, that roadside park is is like, they have a conservation that was in talking to us. You guys probably won't hear yet, but they talked about that, down the park north of Bellevue, there, it's a roadside park, it. Really gets used for anything and other than they have to maintain it, so it's a really issue for them to maintain.
Right.
Because there's really nothing there.
Right, it's just trying to bring people through, let them know the history of your county, what some of the things were. You know, they have like Al Capo, Al Capo.
Capo.
Oh, ties to Sebula, which I didn't know about that, I looked it up after the meeting a little bit. You know, and different stuff like that, Laker Stan. Um but John Weber was, he basically retired and died up in the Bellevue area.
But for me.
Yeah, for me too. But he was kind of the um. He worked on the government led mines. Around Iowa, Illinois, Wisconsin, kind of things, and just kind of giving people different history, and then, you know, they've listed off some places. Over in Jones County and stuff like that, but. So it's a different thing, last year or the year before, they did the same type of thing, but. You had to do something and get points, and then they did a drawing for like gas cards and. Different stuff like that, so they're just trying to promote the use of the scenic byway, their big question was. Since we've redone the road here, we took down the signs, they're hoping they get back up before summer traffic gets going.
That's one of the things I've been questioning, is none of the signs have been put up.
Right, and even the streets, even our street signs here in town, you know, we got Flat Street. But you don't have the side streets up on it.
There's no side tree stop sign.
Yeah. Um they're supposedly working on. Jackson County, and I'm not quite for sure where this is, but we're like one of the states being on the state's welcome center. Like being the state welcome center.
Well, we are right in the know.
So. Um.
Give us the money for it.
Yes. So.
We already sold the welcome center.
And that was kind of it about with uh. Just got a lot of, a lot of things in mind, but nothing really going forward yet.
All right. I have workforce development and keeping your name out of it, because right now. Um there's a problem, they're having, they're starting to find a county willing to be the service here to put all the. And so I'm doing death, deathly silent on that notion.
Deathly, definitely, no, right, Liz?
The other departments does not accept that responsibility.
They're looking for some county too.
Get them centrally located, get somebody centrally located, we're.
Rather looking at Muscatine, I don't know if John Irwin did, or just Jim, I keep saying Jim, Jim Irwin, maybe a throw in Clinton County. I I want to say under the bus a little bit, but. Even if they couldn't get Muscatine to do it. Now.
A second.
A motion to second to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, say aye. And I oppose nay, motion carried.